State their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation and again, ask any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Plan and Zoning Board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The Commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on September 22nd, 2021, at 2:00 PM in this room. Could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance, please?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin. David Rotis.
Present.
Chris Higgins. Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Marvin Davis.
Present.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Present.
Next, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes of our August 3rd, 2021. I have a motion for approval, please.
I'll move to approve.
So be it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Very well, can roll call a vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
The first case we will hear tonight is case number September 21-136, RZ/P. And could we have a staff report?
Yes, Chairman. I would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So, I've got it pulled up on the screen. It is these two lots right here off of Scott Avenue, but I wanted to give you kind of the overall layout of the area. This is east of Liberty, 210 Highway to the south, Missouri City Road to the north, and then I'll zoom in so you can see the two lots that we're discussing a little bit better. Just be patient with my map. It takes a second for it to reload. So, we're talking about creating, we've got roughly 90 acres for the overall property, and we're just plating the two lots that are in the purple and blue. So, this is the overall acreage, like I said, roughly nine acres. We're creating a roughly eight to nine acre lot in Lot 1 in the purple, and a five acre lot in Lot 2 in the blue. This is kind of a unique property because there are three existing houses on the property now. So, how those three houses were built, I think they were built years and years ago. Obviously, now, we wouldn't allow three houses on one property. So, really, this is kind of making this property meet our regulations because it's putting one house on each parcel. Our current code has an exemption if you have 40-plus acres with at least 100 feet of road frontage with access, where if you meet that exemption, you don't have to plat that lot. That's why this large acreage here, that's obviously larger than 40 acres, is not included in the plat. The plat just includes Lot 1 and Lot 2. Let me switch to the staff report. So, this is a rezoning preliminary and final plat application. The property is currently zoned agricultural because it's roughly 90 acres. We are requesting rezoning for Lot 1 and Lot 2. They are both between 5 and 10 acres, so our current zoning for 5 to 10 acres is R5, residential ranchette, and the large 40-acre parcel that we're not plating can remain zoned agricultural because it's larger than 20 acres. The two lots that we're plating combined are 14.21 acres, and they're located in the rural low-density tier, and they are within a mile of the city of Missouri City. The rural low-density tier allows for a five-plus acre lot, so staff believes that those lot sizes meet the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does call for, if you're doing a five-plus acre lot, including some agricultural land preservation, which is a way for the county to keep a portion of the lot unbuilt upon, and the applicant has included the ALP area as part of those two lots. The 40 acres obviously does not have to comply with the ALP requirement. This case was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. There are five rezoning criteria that you can see starting, actually, they're all on page 5 of the staff report, which review and decision-making bodies should consider with every rezoning case. The applicant received all of their outside agency approvals. The Clay County Highway Department has requested that the property line, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit so you can see it. But the Highway Department has requested that this property line on the south of Lot 2 be marked because it has a shared entrance now. The goal would be to have enough of each driveway on each property so they both have access and get rid of that shared access. Since we're not plating this property, we can't require a recorded agreement. So, you'll see that listed as a condition. And then, we reached out to the city of Missouri City, since it is within a mile, and they stated that dividing this property does not interfere with future annexation plans. If I zoom out a little bit here, there is a blue-lined stream and some floodplain that's located on the property. Just give me a second to turn that on so you can see it. The applicant has chose to include that floodplain and the blue-lined stream in their agricultural land preservation. To me, that's a good use of that ALP area. It'll turn on here shortly, but it's basically, you see where this blue line goes through there, that floodplain runs through the lots north to south, so that's included in the ALP area. The applicant had proposed a 30-foot wide ingress/egress easement along the north property of Lot 1 that's noted on your plat. The Highway Department responded that that did not meet site distance, so you'll see one of the conditions is that that 30-foot ingress/egress easement be removed. I think the applicant just wanted to use that to access the back property, but since it does not meet site distance, we are requesting that that be removed from the plat. Staff is recommending that the rezoning and preliminary plat be approved with the two conditions you can see in Exhibit A, and those conditions are a couple changes to the plat, which include that easement and marking the property line that we talked about that was the request of the Highway Department. The applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners have.
All right. Very well. Thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? Is the applicant, would you please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Hi, I'm George Handy, 13900 Jesse James Farm Road, Carney, Missouri. And yeah, I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay.
If I can.
Mr. Handy, do you understand the staff's report and agree with the zoning and the conditions they've set forth for the preliminary plat and such?
I do. And yeah, I, you know, those are both acceptable.
All right.
Or doable.
Okay. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Handy? All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Well, with no further discussion, I would call for a motion for the approval of the rezoning of Dahl House Farms. I have a motion for approval, please.
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Very well. Can I roll call a vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
Okay. With that being said, we'll move right into the preliminary plat, and I would call for a motion of approval of the preliminary plat for Dahl House Farms with the conditions in Exhibit A attached.
Move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Very well. Do you have a roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The second case we'll hear this evening is case number September 21-137F. And could I roll for a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Well, I would like to add the staff's, staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So, this is the final plat for Dahl House Farms. The review for a final plat is included in Section 151-3.6D of the Land Development Code. Based on everything presented to staff, we believe this meets and complies with the Land Development Code and preliminary plat. So, this is basically a rehash of the previous case. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat with the same two conditions that were associated with the preliminary plat, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Does the board have any questions for staff? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
George Handy, 13900 Jesse James Farm Road in Carney.
And Mr. Handy, do you understand the staff's report for the final plat and the couple items in Exhibit A?
I do.
Okay. Do you have any questions for board or staff?
Not that I'm aware of at the moment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Handy.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Well, with no further discussion, I'd call for a motion of approval of the final plat of Dahl House Farms with the items in Exhibit A attached.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Can I roll call a vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number September 21-140RZ/P. And could we have a staff report?
Yes, Chairman. Would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
And I do want to ask, and I may have just missed it, but did we announce the county commission date during your?
Yes, we did.
You did? Okay. So, I just want to make sure.
September 22nd, 2:00 PM.
Okay. I must have zoned out. I appreciate that.
Yep.
So, I've got this property pulled up on the big screen as well. So, this is a roughly 29-acre parcel that is zoned agricultural off of Missouri City Road. The proposal is to divide it into two lots. The lot that you see in the purple has an existing home on it, and the lot in the blue would be a buildable home, or buildable lot for one single-family residence. It's also east of Liberty, but is not within the one-mile radius with one of the cities. Let my map update here a little bit. It shows the floodplain, but there is not floodplain on this property. You can see, this is Ferris Farm to the east, and this is the property, the Dahl House Farms that we just heard, to the kind of south and east. I'll zoom back in. So, we're creating two lots out of one. The lot in purple would be allowed to be zoned agricultural because it would still be 20-plus acres. The lot in blue is roughly 8.62 acres and would be, again, rezoned to R5 because that's our current standard for lots that are between 5 and 10 acres. The Lot 2 would be required, and it's actually shown on the plat, to have an agricultural land preservation. They have chosen the front of the lot, so that's the area that would be protected where the house or the accessory building could not be built. The 20-acre lot would not be required to have the ALP because it is larger than 20 acres. This is also located in the rural low-density tier, which allows a five-plus acre lot. Staff believes this complies because the lot is larger than five acres, and Lot 1 complies with 20-acre minimum for ag zoning. This case was also noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. It has the same five rezoning criteria that are listed on page 4 of the staff report, which review and decision-making bodies should consider with any rezoning case. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. The Clay County Highway Department has requested 30 feet of right-of-way on the east side of Lot 2, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail here in a minute. But the Water District and the Health Center have given their approvals. There are two ponds on Lot 1 that typically, when we plat a property, we require those ponds be inspected. You'll see that's listed as a condition, but the applicant has taken care of that condition, and we have received those reports already. The shed on the north property line meets the setback requirements, but it doesn't meet the 50-foot to house animals. There is a everge easement that runs across the back corner of the property that's also noted on the plat. And then, I want to, let me take off these colored lots. I want to show you the east side of the property because we've gotten several questions about the access to Lot 2 because there is a 20-foot easement that butts up to Lot 2. And let, give me, just bear with me. I want to zoom into it and show you that area a little bit better. Take off that yellow line. So, there's a driveway that serves several properties in here behind this property that is not part of the property that we're plating. It's a 20-foot strip right next to it. So, when a house is built on this property, they do not have access to that 20-foot strip. I verified with the surveyor today that that driveway is within the 20-foot strip, but that strip is not part of this property. So, the folks that use this driveway are still, can use it however they've been using it, and the applicant who's going to build on this lot will have a new driveway to the west of this driveway. And I also spoke with the Highway Department today, and they would allow the applicant, we're going to put that 30-foot, that's a really bad drawing, but we're going to put that 30-foot right-of-way there, and they would allow the applicant to go within that right-of-way for their driveway if that's where they want to do that. It would meet site distance. And the Highway Department, I spoke with one of the neighbors today, and there's some concern about exiting this existing driveway. So, if the folks that use this entrance to get back to their lots wanted to widen their entrance into that right-of-way, Highway Department told me that they would be willing to let them widen their driveway in that area as well. So, the only way that this would be a shared driveway is if Highway issued the new house a driveway permit in this 30 feet, and these folks chose to widen their entrance, and it would be a shared entrance at that point, and then each property would jut over and go onto their own property. And these folks would use their 20 feet, and the new house would veer over onto their property and use it. So, that's where a lot of the questions have been asked about this subdivision. I do want to zoom out and show you the houses that use that 20-foot because they do not have any access other than that 20 feet. And staff is recommending that the rezoning and preliminary plat be approved. And let me highlight a couple of these lots. So, here's one of the lots that uses it, second one, third one, and I believe these lots here have access to it as well. So, there's several lots that are served by that, and the reason Highway is requesting this 30 feet is to allow a future road to go in this area if it would ever be developed. Now, the chances of this part of the county, this ever being developed with a full-on subdivision, probably aren't very good, but there are large acreages back in here. I don't think the topography is all that great as well, so it may not lend itself to be developed. But with this 30 feet, and then if this property to the east would ever plat, then I would assume we would request 30 feet there so the county would leave the ability to develop this landlocked parcel, or parcels, in the future if that ever happened. Now, like I said, you can never say never, but the chances of that happening in this area probably isn't very high. Now, I do want to talk about the conditions. So, staff is recommending approval. You'll notice that the conditions on the preliminary don't match the conditions on the final. I'm not going to ask the Commission to change that until we get to the final plat. And you'll notice on C, where it talks about adding 30 feet of right-of-way along the west property line, that should read east property line. And then, you'll notice that there is an additional condition on the final plat. So, I'm just going to ask you to add Condition C from the preliminary plat to the final plat. With that being said, the applicant is present, and I am happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. So, I have a question for you. Who owns the 20-foot strip of land that's the shared driveway present?
I'll be honest with you. I didn't do the research on that. According to the surveyor, it's one of the property owners to the rear, but I didn't do the research since it wasn't part of this plat. I just verified that it wasn't a part of the plat that we're dealing with today.
Okay. So, we've got the 20 feet is private property or owned by an individual that's shared by multiple individuals. And so, then, the county's requesting another 30 feet of right-of-way, which would be to the west of that.
Yes, sir.
That'd be 50. And then, if the property to the east develops another 30 feet, that'd be an 80-foot.
And we'd have to figure out the 20 feet in between, but in my opinion, by requesting the 30 feet on either side, it leaves development open in the future, but it may not ever work out.
Yeah. All right. All right. Does, do any board members have any questions for staff? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Rebecca Davis, 17419 Northeast 84th Street, Liberty. Rebecca Davis, 17419 Northeast 84th Street, Liberty, Missouri.
All right. Ms. Davis, do you understand the staff's report regarding the rezoning, and then there are conditions for the preliminary plat? Do you understand or have any questions for staff?
I'm a little unsure about the conditions on the easement. I think I need further explanation on that. We were told by the Highway Department that we could come off that gravel drive and make our, for our driveway. Is that not the case?
I don't know. But, Kip, can you respond to Ms. Davis, please?
Yeah. Let me zoom in here and take that yellow line off. So, so, according to the surveyor, which we're going to go by the survey because that's obviously the most accurate information we have, that driveway is not on your property.
Correct.
So, you do not have access to the existing driveway. Now, the 30-foot, the 30-foot right-of-way is going to be placed right here. The Highway Department would grant you access within that 30 feet if you chose, and if these folks wanted to widen their driveway, they could come along and widen it into that 30 feet as well.
At the beginning of the driveway, not down the property line?
Well, this is county right-of-way, so the county is going to allow, and I don't want to speak for the Highway Department, but the county's going to allow each neighbor to equally use that right-of-way. So, if they have a good reason that they want to widen their driveway all the way down that 30 feet, then I would think the Highway Department would allow them to do that. Because when that's dedicated as right-of-way, that becomes county property, and that property is not part of your lot anymore.
May I ask a question?
You can.
We'll get to you. We'll get, we'll get to you in a moment, please.
So, there's a difference between an easement and county right-of-way. An easement allows you to use somebody else's property. County, when something's dedicated as right-of-way, it becomes county property at that point. So, the county would have jurisdiction over that 30 feet and would tell, you know, you would have to request use of that 30 feet through the county Highway Department.
Okay.
So, I have a quick, if I could interject, please. Kip, with that, the present 20-foot wide drive, that's a private drive?
It's, it's private property with an easement overlaid that allows several properties to use it.
So, Kip, are you saying that that easement, these people couldn't use that same easement?
Can you ask that again? I'm sorry.
Can they not use that same easement?
No, because they don't have access to it. Because they're, they need to be, in my opinion, they need to be included in that agreement. Whatever agreement, when that was set up, should tell us what lots they can use. The county can't allow them to use somebody else's property as their access. And my understanding was you did not want to use that as your entrance.
Well, originally, we were not going to use that, and then, we talked to Justin at the Highway Patrol Department, and we decided to come, he said that we could come off that, and that's what he would suggest that we do, so that's what we decided to do.
But are you talking about coming off the other people's driveways?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So, right where you, your red line ends up there?
So, you're not proposing to come in right through this gravel drive?
No. We're proposing about, no.
Right next to it, in that 30 feet that would be county right-of-way?
No. We're trying, we're one, right where that red, where the top of your red line ends up there at the top, see the ditch? We're proposing to come in right after that on that gravel drive.
To me, you can't do that. That is not your property to access.
Okay. That's where the confusion lies because the Clay County Highway Department told me that I could. So, that's where, that's where the confusion lies.
And I talked to the Highway Department today, and
Okay.
I think there was just a misunderstanding because he, Justin, indicated that we were, he and I were on the same page.
Okay. That's fine. I'm just confused as to, because I've been told two different things, so that's all. Okay. So, my only concern is the easement at this point. I don't care about the widening of the drive at the bottom or anything, but I don't want to widen the third gravel drive 20 feet over onto my property line all the way down.
That 30 feet is not your property if this is platted with that 30 feet of right-of-way. That becomes county property, and the county Highway Department would tell them whether they can widen their driveway. So, just let me zoom out here a little bit. So, what, the way the report is written now, and what Highway Department is requesting, is that this 30 feet that is your property at this point, that becomes county right-of-way, and county has jurisdiction over that. That's county property that is no longer your property, and the county could tell whoever abuts that how they can and can't use it.
Okay.
You know, Kip, I've got a little question on that. Because you come up with the county 30-foot jurisdiction, but somebody puts a drive in there, I guarantee you, the county's not going to want to maintain it.
No, they will be responsible for the maintenance.
That's kind of what I thought.
So, if they widen that road, it would end at my, it would end at the back of what was my property line? And then, it just goes into a single drive again?
Then, it would be up to whoever owns this, whether, however, they do that. Because the right-of-way, because we're plating your property at this point, so your property ends right here.
Right.
So, that's where that 30-foot of right-of-way would end.
Okay.
So, it would be up to this property owner whether they could use their property or not.
Why does the county want to get in on the 30-foot to just convolute everything?
To leave the
That's what I'm thinking.
To leave the possibility of development open. If we don't have that 30 feet, then there's no chance of a, of a future road ever going in there, and we limit what can be done there. Now, like I said earlier, maybe that's, generally, that's what the folks in Unincorporated want is no development, but I think part of our job at planning and zoning is to make sure that we orderly develop Clay County. And to me, we should be thinking about the future and if this would ever develop, whether it's 50 years from now or 500 years from now.
May I ask one more question? If, so, I'm pretty sure that, I mean, granted, people, you know, die and things get sold off, but I'm pretty sure everybody behind there wants to keep, they don't want to subdivide their property off. So, the property So the property to the east over there on the east side of that drive, if it ever got subdivid, subdivided, wouldn't it be better to take from their side to, for the driveway? That was just my thought. Instead of my side, wouldn't it be, make more sense to take from the other side? Because they would be the ones that would be subdividing up their land on that, on that east side.
So if this ever subdivided and I was still with the county, we would request thirty feet on them as well. So thirty feet is not enough to put a street. So we generally try to not put it all on one property owner and put it each equally on the abutting properties.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Do you have any other questions or concerns regarding the rezoning or the preliminary plat?
I don't think so, not at this time.
All right. Thank you. Is there any, any one in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard, please? Yep?
My name's Patricia Templeton, I live at 174...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Patricia Templeton at 17419 Northeast 84th Street. I just want to, I'm trying to understand something. So the way the property is now, that it's not divided, the county does not own thirty feet of that road, is that correct?
To my knowledge, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so it's not divided and county doesn't own it. But because they're dividing it, they want to take thirty feet. And that just, I'm sorry, but that doesn't make sense to me. I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
I really am, but it doesn't make sense to me. Because it would be like encroaching on their driveway with that other thirty feet. And if they're incorporating on the east side, they're going to be subdividing the lots anyway.
If they develop the east.
If they develop it, that is correct.
Yeah.
It's, if, the way I understand it, the developer takes responsibility of widening that road.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, then why would it have anything to do with eight acres? I, I, it just, it's not, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's just not making sense to me.
Mr. Jones, could you help us out here?
So to me, this is our one chance, the county's one chance, to plan for the future. So this is, this is most likely the only time this property is going to be platted. And we may be taking this thirty feet and it may never be used. We have a bunch of road easements that were taken in the sixty, seventies, eighties that we end up going back and vacating and getting rid of those road easements. But my opinion is, this is the county's one chance to make sure that we can put in county infrastructure if it's needed in the future. And to me, the way to do it on this property is to make sure that we have a, enough right-of-way to put in a county road if one would ever need to be put in there. But you're correct, the developer would build the road. The county's not in the business of building roads. So the only way that road would ever go in is if a developer comes in and subdivides some stuff, but we've got to make sure he has access.
And it's too expensive for a developer to put in that road and develop that piece out there without putting in sewer and everything else. It's not going to happen. I mean, not in our lifetime. I understand where you're coming from, taking a thirty feet.
Well, I just, I was just trying to understand.
Right, you just can't build on it. I mean, you could actually plant trees on it, people do it all over the county. You just can't build on it. And for argument's sake, I mean, it's honestly, I mean, people are going to drive by it, you just can't build on it. It's still going to be, you still, you're going to have to maintain it, but it's pretty much still your property.
The thirty feet.
Yeah.
So if that's the case then, then my next question is, and I, I know my neighbors, I don't think they're small-minded enough to not let her come in off that gravel lane, so why, why is that a big deal? I mean, it costs down, cuts down on substantial cost. I mean, that's a significant driveway to start clearing out to the road where it would be, you know, fifty feet to come off that gravel lane. Is there a restriction for, I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand?
So shared driveways cause the most issues that I have to deal with daily at planning and zoning.
Sure.
So I'm not a big fan of shared driveways. So in any case where we don't have to do a shared driveway, where we can have a safe access, it would be my opinion that we should not do a shared driveway. And I think some of those neighbors that you're, and I don't know, are you one of the neighbors that uses that easement?
No.
Okay, I think some of the neighbors may feel a little bit different, that they don't want any additional traffic on that easement.
Okay, well, I was mistaken. I guess that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else in the audience like to comment on the case?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Raymond Downing. I live at 19426 Missouri City Road. The echo in here in my aged ears are difficult. A great deal of what many people are saying here, I'm not, I've not been able to hear it well. First and foremost, I would like to welcome the Davis family to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Welcome to Clay County. Second, very importantly, I have had numerous conversations with Mr. Jones and his staff. They've done an exemplary job. Mr. Jones has explained things to me that I did not have any idea. He has helped me through the process, showed me that county regulations, give me the what-for and the howcome. His staff recognizes me when I call. And so I look at this as a correctly moving forward county movement. The gentlemen of this committee, thank you for serving. I don't want to bore you all night. My wife wrote down what I couldn't hear. She said, "State your name and address, keep questions pertinent to the thing at hand." I will attempt to do that, gentlemen. August of nineteen seventy-six, I purchased the forty north of there. The first line of my deed describes for ingress and egress that twenty feet. I have maintained that driveway since I moved there in August of seventy-six. I could bore you to this time tomorrow with the frustrations that it's brought by people parking in it, people not knowing that that is a thoroughfare for my ingress and egress. It is grobed. When I moved there, my house was built in twenty-nine. I suspect that that easement was granted sometime back in early part of the nineteenth Right now, there is three active families living on that driveway. There are six active drivers. I farm, I haul machinery, hay and cattle up and down that driveway regularly. My son also does. Dan and Kelly, who owns the four, the twenty right north of it, have two children that use that driveway. I can tell you that twenty-foot driveway right now is, reached its peak of handling The thing that those maps don't show is the lay of the land. The number one thing I see here is outside the agency's review. It says, "Clay County Highway Department has stated that both lots have adequate site distance. The highway department has also requested thirty feet of right-of-way on the west side of the line to allow for possible future development." I want to take you back to both accesses, to both Lot One and Lot Two. The one that's been there, the Crammel lot that comes out on Richfield or Missouri City Road, that is really, honestly, it's a blind. If you're headed westbound and you're trying to come out of that driveway, that hill and that curve, it's a dangerous driveway. The second obstacle is my driveway. What you can't see from this map is, right there where Mr. Jones is pointing, that it drops off steeply. So if you're coming from either way, you can't see a car right where his asterisk is. So when you're rolling down the road and you're trying to negotiate traffic, whether you're turning in front of somebody or whether there's somebody behind you, when you make that turn, if there's a car sitting right there in that driveway, you can't see it until you're right on top of it. So what Mr. Jones brought out about that being, needing to be widened and the Davis family needing to make their own driveway down that thirty-foot is a safety issue. And I ask you to endorse that. I could bore you from this time tomorrow with people parking there, unnecessary sheriffs calling. If it's a domestic issue, the sheriff department won't give you a written report. Someone of your caliber has to request it. There are numerous items there that you could investigate if you so fit. So what I'm, I'm telling you that Mr. Jones has got this correct, he wants to approve it, but for anybody else using that driveway, it would be a horrible safety hazard. If you have any questions for me, I'll shut up.
I think that's the path we're on is to request the Davises put in their new driveway to the west of the existing twenty-foot private and not share the twenty-foot private. It's the path we're presently taking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Louise Crammel and I own the...
Can you speak into the, can you speak to the microphone, please?
Pardon me?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Okay. I'm Louise Crammel and I own the property that we're discussing here. Now then, I had thirty, thirty acres. And quite frankly, this, this whole situation here, I don't understand, we have the twenty-foot easement for these people, the driveway. On the other side of that driveway, that twenty feet, is a hundred and twenty acres of vacant land. Would it not be more reasonable to widen from the other side?
I would venture to say that when the property to the east is subdivided or platted, there will be an additional thirty feet of right-of-way added to the east side of the existing twenty-foot drive.
This is true, but in the meantime, you're going to be moving over on the west side when it won't, I don't see it as to going to be necessary. Now, we've heard that the visibility is very poor. I've lived there for almost fifty years and there has never been any problem with visibility that I'm aware of. But then that's just me. I, maybe I can see a little better.
Okay.
But I've never experienced any problems whatsoever.
Well, I think the Clay County Highway Department concurs with you because they don't have an issue with the site distance for either location. So we're in agreement there.
Well, I, I just don't see why this property, or why the road cannot be widened on the east side as opposed to taking up the smaller property and cutting off that smaller property. When there's a big hundred and twenty acres on the other side, it's farmland.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case? Yes, sir.
Yes. My name is Dan Schneikart and I live just north of Louise's property.
Yes, sir.
Nineteen four twenty-two Missouri City Road. I don't, I'm not very excited about this easement on the twenty-foot driveway. I understand it only goes down to the Lot Two that we're going to subdivide. It doesn't go down any farther, but I don't think anyone on this property really wants any subdivision put in anywhere. And if it's not really a possibility, then why do we need to have the easement there? If, if they can install their driveway without the easement, then why do we need it?
Are you talking about the easement or the proposed right-of-way for the county?
The proposed right-of-way for the county, yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, can I address one thing?
Yes, sir.
So this has come up a couple of times. Where we, when we say the word subdivision, it's for any time we divide land. So we consider breaking this land into two lots a subdivision. Now, I know that's different than what most people think. They think that's interior-streated city subdivision. But part of, you know, our mission statement at planning and zoning is to orderly develop Clay County. And part of doing that is making sure that we have future infrastructure or future infrastructure can be placed to develop. But as Mr. Davis said, I'm, I'm not a developer. My staff aren't developers. We don't look at the topography and all that stuff of each parcel. So this may never be developed, but my job is to make sure it can be developed in the future if someone chooses to do that. And that's why we're requesting that right-of-way. Now, there's a difference between an easement and a right-of-way, and I want to be clear that there is nothing going over that twenty-foot strip. It, this thirty feet of right-of-way, if approved, with that thirty feet, is going just to the west of that twenty feet. So nobody's messing with that twenty feet.
Right.
It's not changing.
Okay. Does anyone else in the audience like to comment on the case being heard? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Kelly Schneikart and I live with Dan at 19422 Missouri City Road. My question is, so we have the twenty-foot shared driveway and then the Davises can build their driveway and the thirty-foot right-of-way. What is the distance that would have to be between the two driveways?
That'd be the, the, Clay County Highway Department's going to coach Mr. and Ms. Davis if they so choose to put their driveway in that, in the thirty-foot right-of-way extending to the north.
But they would make sure that, that there was a line of sight, that they weren't so close together that if both cars were coming out, that everyone could see and be safe?
I think there's the chance that someone could be egressing from the north at the same time the Davises are and someone's going to go first and someone's going to go second.
Okay. That's just, my only concern is for the safety and we have the two little girls that, they catch the bus at Missouri City Road. And so when it's nice outside, one of us will walk them to or from the bus stop or they're old enough where they can also walk. And so my main concern is just safety for everyone involved, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Does the board have any questions for, for staff?
Yeah, hey, Kip, did the, did the highway department, did they approve anywhere along Missouri City for that driveway?
The, my understanding is they would not. I think they, the two options, to my understanding, are right, it, within that thirty feet or they would have to go down, maybe down across from this driveway here and be down here in this location. But not everywhere can be approved, is my understanding.
Okay, but you're saying that one of the areas that they approved is within that right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay.
And I double-checked that today.
Okay.
Well, with no additional discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of the Crammel Acres as presented. Motion for approval, please?
I'll move to approve.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, do we have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
And moving on to the preliminary plat, I would call for a motion of approval of the preliminary plat of Crammel Acres with the attachments in Exhibit A attached, although they will be corrected in the final plat.
Correct.
Very well. Do you have a motion with the attachments attached?
I'll move to approve.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Next case we'll hear this evening is September 21-141F. And could we have a staff's report?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the final plat for Cramell Acres. It's handled under Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. It is a basic, just a resumé of the preliminary plat. Staff feels it complies with the Land Development Code and the preliminary plat. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in Exhibit A, and this is, so I'm gonna show them on the screen. So this is where I screwed up. So we talked about Condition 2 is already met, but we'll leave it on there. There, you'll notice this new condition is just a change in the signature area because the last name is spelled wrong. So that's a minor change. And then I would request, if the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to leave that 30 feet of right-of-way, I would request that we add Condition 1D, and it should read, "Add 30 feet of right-of-way along east property line." And I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
All right. Does any of the board members have questions for staff? Would the applicant step up to the podium, state your name and address, please?
Rebecca Davis, 17419 Northeast 84th Street, Liberty, Missouri.
Ms. Davis, do you understand the staff's report and the, at the items that we're talking about in this, in the Exhibit A?
I do.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
So is there any way to take this, this right-of-way, this 30-feet easement off, or since we've heard from neighbors that don't want it on there either? I have no problem building my own driveway if that needs to be done. I'm just concerned about the easement. If our house sits 50 feet from the property line-
Are we talking about the easement or the right-of-way?
The right-of-way.
Yeah.
Or, I guess, the 30 feet.
Yeah. That's the 30-foot right-of-way that the county's proposing.
Yeah.
The Highway Department's proposing.
The reason why I'm concerned about that is if our house sits 50 feet from the property line, and you're gonna take 30 feet on for developing, this is gonna cause an issue in the future.
Well, as Mr. Davis or Marvin stated earlier, I mean, it's your property, you're gonna mow it, maintain it, you can plant trees, and, and Mr. Davis also stated the chances, likelihood of a real subdivision going in with curbs and gutters and asphalt and probably not happening in our lifetime.
Well, I would hope not, but knowing my luck, it would.
Did the Highway Department recommend this, Kip? Or was this just something that here in the department was discussed?
We, so we have a TRC meeting that happens each month about each case, and these things like this are what we discuss. I honestly don't remember. I would guess, I probably brought this up, is it, is it gonna, are you gonna hurt my feelings if you don't add it on there? No. I'm just trying to do my job to the best of my ability, but the commission has the will to not add that condition in there, and it's probably never gonna become an issue. So, and just, I wanna just touch on that side setback. So Ms. Davis is correct that if that right-of-way is taken, her setback, that would affect her setback for her house. Now, the setback on a side property line is based on zoning, and I just wanna make sure I tell you that correctly. So for R5 zoning, she would have to be 25 feet off that side property line, but you may wanna be more if that right-of-way is there, just because you don't wanna be within 25 feet of a future road.
Push, yeah. And, and we're gonna have issues in positioning the house because it starts to slope downhill. So we only have a certain amount, we pretty much have just one spot that house can go on there.
So right now, there's a, the survey we're looking at calls out a 15-foot utility easement to the west of the property line?
Yeah. We put utility easements around each property line. Generally, that's 15 feet.
So then is that, so we're gonna have a 30-foot right-of-way and then a 15-foot utility easement?
Yes.
So it, the, we're gonna extend 45 feet west of the east property line with right-of-way and utility easements?
So she, for the house, the house would have to be 25 feet from that side, from this east. So wherever that right-of-way is, the house would have to be 25 feet, which is greater than the 15-foot easement.
So it'll be 30 and 15 and 25?
It would be 30 and 25. The 15 would be within that 25-foot side building.
Now, you're gonna allow utilities to go on the county right-of-way?
That's up to the Highway Department. A utility should go within the utility easement. I've cut up.
I'm having a hard time grasping.
Me too. I honestly, Kip, and I get what you guys go through every day with regard to shared driveways and right-of-ways. But looking at it, I mean, is, you know, and I, I'm gonna ask this, is there a Dorsey Hale here tonight by chance that owns that property on the, on the east side?
The east side.
Well, ma'am, ma'am, will you hold on, please?
And have we, have we closed it for public comment?
No, we've, we've not closed it, but public comment's not open right now. Please.
Yeah, just give me one sec. I, I don't-
Huh? I, I just have a hard time. We've got 20-foot, nobody knows who owns the 20-foot strip. And then we're gonna get 30-foot right-of-way on the west of it. And then I don't know of any state or county right-of-ways that you could all call the utility corridor, which is six feet in the right-of-way from private side. So if you're gonna have a dedicated utilities, you're gonna have 30-foot right-of-way and a 15-foot utility easement, and a 25-foot building setback from there, I just, I don't know.
You know, if any kind of development goes on, especially on the east side of that, for one thing, a developer is gonna go in on that east side, they're gonna go in and center that big ground anyway.
Yep.
So I mean, I don't, I think, I don't think-
I agree there. He's not gonna come off that top area. You're gonna need two, a bigger exit. I mean, just looking at this property on, on my landline map, and looking at it, trying to look at it as a developer, you're not gonna come off that close to that-
So we'd agree just to remove it?
Yeah. I would agree to remove it.
Thank you.
Be quite honest. Yeah.
Thank you.
Is Missouri City Road, is that county or state?
It's a county road, and I just wanna be clear, you do not, it's not currently on the final plat, so you do not have to remove that condition. Just, you just do not need to add it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's even easier. So it's a county road, there's an existing 40-foot right-of-way along the south edge of your property, and with site distance approval from the Highway Department, you can put your driveway anywhere you want. And we've already made it clear that the 20-foot private is off limits. Okay.
Good with that?
Yep. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Could we, is, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard?
So they will put their driveway along their road frontage, that's approved by the Highway Department?
Correct. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard?
Good evening. My name's Cody Downing. I live at 19424 Missouri City Road. I'm just, again, unsure, don't, this isn't what I do. So they're gonna access their property, their home, off the existing 20-foot easement? Off the existing 20-foot driveway?
No.
Okay. So where's the?
The Highway Department will have to approve a spot along Missouri City, the road there on the south side of their property for their driveway.
Okay.
There will not be a-
Basically, the eight-acre road frontage?
Correct.
Okay. Got you. Thank you. Cody Downing.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Does the board have any questions for staff? I think I've got one. So we're not going to add 1D?
Correct. Yeah, I believe so.
And?
So you had it right the first time, Kip.
See, that's what I was planning.
Exhibit A and the final preliminary is, is good to go as presented, so.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number September 21-142RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, sir. So be it.
So this is a rezoning and preliminary and final plat for Scarborough Ranch. Just give me a second while I update it. This is kinda similar to the first case we had, where we have a large acreage, this one being about 120 acres. And we're proposing to subdivide two roughly five-acre lots off of that 120 acres, that 120, the remaining acreage meets that 40-plus acres, 100 feet of road frontage with access exemption, so it does not have to be platted. So we are just plating these two lots. They, again, would be R5 residential ranchette zoned lots with the agricultural land preservation. This is a unique property because it's right in between two of the tiers in the comprehensive plan. So I will turn that on and show you, but it's between the natural resources tier and the urban services tier. The natural resources tier allows a five-plus acre lot. The urban services give us guidance that you should do a 10-plus acre lot, but you can see the yellow is the natural resources tier. So it's mostly located in that tier, which allows the five-acre lot. So staff believes it meets the exemption for the five-acre lot with the agricultural land preservation. This case was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. It has the same five rezoning criteria as any rezoning case. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. 162nd Street calls for a recreational easement for a future trail. Again, probably never happened, but we're gonna put that 15-foot recreational easement within the 30-foot utility easement along northeast 162nd. We can't close that because that'll lock. Sorry. I know they're loud. So we'll have that recreational easement within that 30-foot utility easement. And then there is a, you'll see a pond on proposed Lot 1. You'll see a condition. Condition 2 says that that pond shall be removed before recording of the final plat. The reason is that's too close to that property line. We don't want pond, property lines to go through ponds because we have to put that utility easement along that back property line. Now, I am told that that pond is more of a puddle than a pond, so staff is gonna go out and take a look at it and make sure that that is taken care of before the plat is recorded. And staff is recommending approval with the two conditions, the one about the pond, and there are several just small changes to the recording copies of the final plat. And the applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Does any of the board members have a question for staff? I would ask if applicants in attendance, if you can step up to the podium, state your name and address, please?
Ashley Stoneham, 7509 Northeast 109th Terrace.
Ms. Stoneham, do you understand the rezoning and the preliminary plat and the recommendations that staff is making?
Yes.
You agree with him?
Yes. I did wanna let Kip know that that mudhole is what it is. The dam has been cut, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion for approval of the rezoning of Scarborough Ranch. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
Then we'll roll right into the preliminary plat. I would call for a motion for the approval of the preliminary plat of Scarborough Ranch with items under Exhibit A attached to the motion.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is September 21-143F. And could we have a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the final plat for Scarborough Ranch. Again, this is handled under Section 151-3.6D of the Land Development Code. Based on everything presented, staff believes this complies with the Land Development Code and the preliminary plat. We are recommending approval of the final plat, and it's basically the same conditions except we added Condition 1E, which is just a minor change. It's to add larger signature lines for the signatures. This surveyor loves putting some small lines where it's hard to sign. So other than that, the conditions are the same, and we are recommending approval.
All right. Any board members have a question for staff? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Ashley Stoneham, 7509 Northeast 109th Terrace.
And Ms. Stoneham, do you understand and agree with the staff's report, including the attached items in Exhibit A?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Very well. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? With no further discussion, I'd call for a motion for approval of the final plat of Scarborough Ranch with items in Exhibit A attached.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear tonight is case number 21-144RZ/F. You could have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is another two-lot subdivision. A highway is just to the west. This is 136th Street. Most people are familiar with where Oak Brook is off 136th. This is the Oak Brook subdivision. And just to the east is the newer Oak Ridge subdivision, with Plattsburgh Road being a little bit farther to the east. So this proposal is for a roughly 24-acre lot to be split into two lots. There is an existing single-family home on the lot. That home would stay with the Peach Lot 5A, I think it is, roughly 15 acres. And then there would be an additional buildable lot under Lot 5B in the blue, where one single-family home could be built. This lot is roughly eight acres. This parcel is located in the urban services tier. So the urban services tier with the comp plan will tell us that we need to do 10-plus acres in this- that we need to do 10-plus acres in this area. It does give an exemption if the property is within a mile of a city, that we can reach out to that city and the city can grant exemptions. This property is far enough out that it is not within a mile of any of the cities. So we did not get comments from an adjoining city. The intent of the urban services tier is to promote urban development compatible with long-range growth plan of adjoining cities. Staff believes, even though it doesn't meet that 10-acre minimum, that it is compatible with the existing uses and zoning of nearby property and does meet the current conditions in this area in the county. Now, I do want to turn on... so it's hard to see the lot sizes when I have the aerial image on. So I'm going to turn off the aerial image and turn on the zoning so you get an idea of some of the lot sizes in this area. Now, there's obviously several subdivisions in that area where the lots are anywhere from an acre to three to four acres. And then there's some other land that's been subdivided in the past that is smaller than the eight acres. But let me turn on the zoning, and that'll help you a little bit, and I can identify on a couple of the properties once my map updates. So like, the property directly across the street is three acres. And we've got one that's four, one that's between four and five. This one's 10. You've got all the... this is Oak Brook here. Those are small lots. Interior subdivision street here, interior... this is an interior subdivision street there. I don't know why those lot lines aren't showing up. But to me, you know, each there, those lines show up. So here's all the smaller lots. Here's some smaller lots. And then there are some bigger lots as well, so this one's close to 20, 20, 40. And this is kind of a difficult one when you're in a 10-acre area. Do we allow a smaller lot if it matches what's consistent with the area? So, you know, staff... I tend to get concerned if we're doing something under five acres because then we have issues with fitting everything on the property, especially if there's easements or floodplain or whatnot. But on an eight-acre lot, I'm not so concerned. So that's the reason staff recommended approval on this one, because we believe it does match the surrounding area. It has the same five rezoning criteria. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. The pond, and I'll turn the aerial back on, but there is a pond on 5B, like I said, that will need to be inspected before the plat is recorded. And then there is a 20-foot Platte Clay Electric easement on the property, and it's noted on the plat. And we kind of have the same deal with another shed. It meets the setback requirements for an accessory structure, but does not meet the setback requirements if it houses animals. And staff is recommending approval with the two conditions that you can see, which is the pond be inspected and the couple changes to the recording copy of the final plat. The applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions the board has.
So it looks like the driveway for Lot 5A is just to the east of 5B?
Yes. Let me turn back the aerial on so you can see that. I'll turn some of the zoning off. So each lot does meet their minimum road frontage requirement. This one is close on width to depth, but we did the math. It does meet the width to depth. Here is the driveway. And you know how I love shared driveways, but this is not a shared driveway.
Okay.
Thank goodness. So this lot would have its own driveway. And I think it states 5B would be located west of 11817, which I assume is this. I don't want to assume. Actually, it's this one. So it's... the new driveway would be located right in between these two existing driveways.
All right. All right. Thank you, Kip. Does any... do the board members have any questions for staff? Is the applicant present this evening? If you step up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Paul Wolf. Address 11812, Northeast 136th Street, Liberty.
And Mr. Wolf, do you understand the staff's report regarding the rezoning and the conditions in the approving the final plat?
Yes, I do. Yep.
Do you have any questions for staff or board?
No, I don't think so. No questions.
All right. Very well. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? With no further discussions, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of the replat of Lot 5 at Yosemite West. Motion for approval, please.
I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
I think we'll roll right into the approval of the final plat. I would call for a motion of the approval of final plat of Lot 5, Yosemite West, with the conditions attached to Exhibit A as part of the motion.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
That guy next to you put a lot of money into that pond over there, didn't he? On a... On 136th. Oh, yeah.
Okay, next case we hear this evening is September 2-1-145-RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is a rezoning preliminary and final for Lilian's Landing. Probably looks familiar. Came in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple months ago as a four-lot subdivision. As I spoke with the earlier case, I... staff gets trepidation when we get some lots under five acres. The case was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission and was recommended to County Commission to be denied. The applicant at that point chose to withdraw the application and rework it, and they've come back with a three-lot subdivision. So just to reacquaint you with this, this is Nation Road, 116th Street. It is east of I-35, west of 33, kind of over by the Clay County Highway Department. Roughly 18 acres. The new... and you see, there's 35, there's 33, here's the highway department. Here's the properties that we're talking about. So the new proposal is for three roughly six-acre lots. So we reduce it by one. It's located in the urban services tier, so kind of the same with the previous case. The urban services tier indicates that we should do a 10-plus acre lot. The exception is, again, if the property's within one mile. Now, you may remember this property is within a mile of the City of Liberty. The City of Liberty responded that they have no comments or concerns with this case. Typically, if we're going to use that out... or that approval from the city, we're going to need them to give us more details. City of Liberty chose not to because it's my understanding their comp plan does not go outside city limits. So technically, we're in a 10-acre period... area. We're doing roughly six-acre lots. So as with the previous case, we look at the surrounding areas. So I'm going to, again, take off the aerial and then turn on the zoning. And I know we did a little bit of this last time. But staff believes that the proposed lot sizes are more compatible with the surrounding property areas and meet the current conditions in the area. So let me turn on the zoning. There are... there's kind of a mix in this area, too. So there's some larger lots, like next door. I'll click on this one and see how big that one is once my map updates. So we're... and keep in mind, we're dealing with rough acreage. That's 70 acres. Then we have quite a few of these five-acre lots, a little over five acres. We've got a bigger one that's 40. Got some 10s or 9s or 10s. We've got a 3. We've got a almost 80-acre. So it's a... it's a mix. Now, if we zoom out a little bit more, it'll be kind of the same story. We're looking at just a bunch of different-sized lots. Staff is much more comfortable with this application because it's... each lot is larger than some of the lots in the area. It at least meets the five-acre minimum in the other two tiers. But there could be something said that it doesn't meet the 10-acre minimum, just like the previous case. So there are some interior subdivisions that are... interior streeted subdivisions that are halfway close. Obviously, this is Prairie Field over here, but there's also some large acreage, so it's a mix. This case was also noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent the letters. It has the same five rezoning criteria. The applicant received all their outside agency approvals. I do want to highlight the Health Department approval. If I can get to the right reports. Because they indicated that they wanted to note that the recommendation for an alternative system and careful planning for home location, septic location, and replacement area on Lot 2. So if we go back to the aerial, Lot 2 is the blue one. That's the one with the pond. So there was, you know, Health Department approved it, but they wanted it on the record that there needs to be careful planning for Lot 2 because of that pond and the areas that the septic... septic and future septic need to be located. They need to be located in certain areas. So I wanted to mention that. And then the other unique thing that we kind of talked about last time, once the aerial comes back on, is that there's an existing home on Lot 3. So in this case, we're talking about two additional homes, one on Lot 1 and one on Lot 2. Lot 3 has an existing home. It is too close to the front property line, as we discussed last time. We're considering that a non-conforming structure, which non-conforming structure is something that was legally established that does not meet the current code. So what that means is that house can exist as it is now, and they... they can enlarge the house as long as it... or do additions to the house, as long as it does not basically make it not more non-conforming. So they can't build on closer to the street, basically is what the rule says. And the rule also says if that home is damaged by 50% of its value immediately prior to when the damage occurred, then it has to go away and cannot continue to exist. And then there are a couple ponds on this property. They were inspected, and they got good inspection reports. And staff is recommending this time the rezoning and preliminary plat be approved with the condition in Exhibit A, and it is just a couple changes to the recording copies of the final plat. And the applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Do any board members have questions for staff regarding Lilian's Landing? If the applicant would step up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Luke Owen at 637 Northeast 100th Street in Kansas City.
Good evening, Luke.
Good evening.
Do you understand and agree with the staff's rezoning and then the conditions they have on the preliminary plat?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Owen? All right. Thank you, sir.
Can I make a comment, or does that later?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I... since we were here on July 4th and had the discussion about the four-lots split, we considered the comments made by this commission and the public comments we received as well, and went back and made the revisions here. We looked at those three lots that are all over six acres so that they could all be uniformly zoned as an R5. And in doing so, as Kip was showing on this map here, the 6.3-acre tracks are now larger than 18 different lots on that same street, just stopping at Clay County Highway Department and then going to the end of the street to the west of it. So there's... there are quite a few lots that are smaller. I think in the last comment, our last session, just to the east of us there, was kind of a surprise at some of those lots. I think some of the surprise was that those... there are so many small lots on that street there. We also had a comment about the concern for traffic going on the gravel road of Nation Road as well as 116th Street. So in the revision, we tried to just add one driveway on Nation and one on 116th so that it kind of splits any additional traffic up into those two areas. And on the gravel road, it just adds one driveway to cut down on the dust control from there. So we made the adjustment for that. And we were looking at this between the three lots and the two lots. They're both zoned the same, and the use type would be the same, whether it's 6.6 acres or 9.1 acres. And again, we talked to the County Highway Department. In the three traffic studies they did, there's 120 average daily count for 116th Street and 39 average daily count for Nation Road. We asked if there was any improvements we need to do on Nation Road. They said, "We do not want any improvements on Nation Road. We do not want to maintain any additional infrastructure. Leave it alone. We got it. There's not enough traffic to warrant that, and one additional house will not increase that to where we have interest in changing that." And then looking at the urban services tier, the ruling that got us on this 2008 ruling is set up for moderate density development on municipal-level surfaces... services up to four units per acre. And the discussion last time was that splitting this into smaller tracks would be more enticing to Liberty to annex it. And what we're proposing is a far cry from the four-acre-per-lot master planning that the urban services tier is set up for. The... to my knowledge, a sparsely densely populated area where there's houses over a large area is less attractive for a city than a subdivision with higher density to it, more tax revenue, more property tax and personal property tax. So by having these extra lots here, it doesn't seem that this would all of a sudden encourage Liberty to want to annex anytime soon. And in the goal of orderly developing Clay County, I have been through developing a subdivision before. I've been a home builder for 17 years now and worked in every city and county north of the river and a lot of them south of the river. I've heard from neighbors in meetings like this who don't want the development and the lot splits because it's an unknown. You don't know who's going to buy that. You don't know who's going to use it, how they're going to use it, and what impact that's going to have on the order that's already out there in the area. But I've also stood on properties just like that scores of times with homeowners who want to build their dream home. And the property there with Lots 2 and Lot 1 are just ideally set up for building a house. And the one has the pond on it. We would be able to identify a backup. There's actually four options for a septic field for up to a five-bedroom house, which is the max you can size it for on a typical septic. So there's four of them available on Lot 2. And even on Lot 1, there's multiple options available. So I feel like with the way the Clay County Health Department lines out their permits, there are multiple options on both of those lots for the septic. So it is a balance trying to figure out how to split these when they're in a non-prescriptive method. But after getting the comments back the last time, I feel that this resubmittal is a good compromise to develop this in the most orderly way that we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Moore, 15622, Northeast 116th Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my family. I live in... live on the adjacent 80 acres at the corner of 116th Street and Nation Road, which encompasses the one-acre lot with our... Road, which encompasses the one acre lot with our house and a three acre lot that was purchased by my parents in the nineteen-seventies in case they needed to move closer to take care of my grandparents. The house with the one acre was built in the nineteen-thirties by my grandparents, and again, my parents purchased the three acres in the nineteen-seventies. At those times, the smaller light, lot sizes were in accordance with the rules of the time. Today, I'm asking you to follow the ten acre minimum. At the July meeting, as we mentioned, Mr. Owen was advised to divide the land into four lots, but that the board would most likely approve two lots, which is in, within ten percent of the eight, ten acre requirement. The request today would result in about a forty percent deviation from the minimum required lot size. Our fear is that if you approve this deviation, it will set a precedent for future developers to come in and subdivide the land. Smaller parcels in a more populated area would lead us one step closer to annexation by the City of Liberty, which they've already tried to do in the past. Annexation is our greatest fear, as we would lose many of the benefits of country living, including hunting, riding ATVs, bonfires, target practice, and the ability to have large livestock. These are all things that are very important to us, and probably not as important to Mr. Owen, as he has no vested interest, because I don't believe he's intending to live on this parcel of land, but could be wrong. I respectfully request that tonight you deny this rezoning request and adhere to the rules and regulations, or within ten percent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment?
Good evening. My name's Deborah Walters, and I'm glad we're not talking about a shared driveway either, 'cause I don't like those either. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. In nineteen-eighty-six, we built our house on 116th Street. That's where we live, right across from the eighty acre farm. We followed the rules that were governed by the Planning and Zoning Committee at that time. I would like to ask and trust that you will follow the rules today in this case. The residents of Clay County are counting on you to do this when you serve on this board. We don't wanna be annexed. They've already tried, since we've lived there a couple of times. They do want our properties. Not following the rules will just get us closer to that annexation. We will not be able to live in our now rural community. Please follow the rules. Out of the state, out-of-state investors and builders who do not live on our street don't care about upsetting our rural community, but folks that live in our area do. We and our neighbors are counting on you to help us. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? So, was the original cemental from Mr. Owen, wasn't it a three fives and a three acre track? Is that...
There was one that was, I, I'm going off my memory, but a three-point-eight, one that was between four and five, and that would leave roughly, yeah, I can, if you give me a minute, I can find it. I just don't wanna tell you wrong, so let me... My eyes are horrible. Let me zoom in a little bit more. So there's a five, a five, a four-point-four, if I read that right?
Yeah.
And a three-point-eight?
Yeah. And then just to the east of that is the three acre lot, which is part of the eighty.
Yeah, and so sometimes, sometimes these one or three acre lots were done a long time ago.
Yeah.
And sometimes they were just done for financial purposes to, for their mortgage. So I, without looking at their deed, I couldn't tell you if this is really separated, or if it's not. But obviously, the property owner said it was, so I would go with that. But yes, it is just to the east.
I think Mr. Owen's done a fine job to follow recommendations from the July meeting and come back in good faith and, and I would call for a motion for approval of the rezoning for Lilian's Landing. If any of the board members have any comments, you know, jump in, but...
Well, I would agree. I mean, basically, and, and, no offense by any means, but I mean, there's, there's quite a few lots that are under six acres in this area. I mean, there's many, actually. And I think these three lots would fit the area. And I, I don't see a, a big problem, or any problem, actually, on this case. But I'll move to approve.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
We'll roll right into the preliminary plat, and I would call for a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Lilian's Landing with the items in Exhibit A attached to the motion.
Move to approve with conditions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions. The next case, last case we heard this evening is case number September 21-146F. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the final plat for Lilian's Landing, basically a repeat of the previous plat. As I stated earlier, it's Section 151-3.6D of the Land Development Code that deals with final plats. Based on everything presented, staff believes the subject property complies with the preliminary plat and the Land Development Code. The outside agency approval, everything is the same as the preliminary plat, and staff is recommending approval with the same one condition that has some changes to the recording copy of the final plat. And I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
All right, thank you, Kip. Any board members have questions for staff? And would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Luke Owen, 637 Northeast 100th Street, Kansas City, Missouri.
Mr. Owen, you understand and agree with the staff's report and recommendations for the minor changes on the planning?
Yes, I do.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Very well, thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? And I would call for a motion for the approval of the final plat of Lilian's Acres with the condition under Exhibit A attached to the motion.
Move to approve with conditions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call, vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
Is there any other business that the staff would have, manager's comments?
Uh, I just wanna, I didn't catch everybody before the meeting, but I wanna introduce Shane, who's sitting on the other side. That's our new planner. So please say hi to Shane, he's gonna be with us and thrown into the fire at some point. So welcome. And then update the commission on the previous cases from last month, which were Middleton, which was the one off WHB Road that had the five nine acre lots. It was approved by the County Commission. And then Providence Stadios, which was up kinda by Smithville Lake, where they took two lots and made it three lots, those, that was approved by the commission as well. And then the best news yet is that we will not have a meeting next month. No meeting, no applications.
Wow. Will?
It's been a while. So get ready for the next month, because we'll probably get hammered.
And I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Arbeni?
I think you can just adjourn, if you want.
Adjourn. Adjourn, adjourn.